By Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First thing on the agenda after the Pledge of Allegiance is to approve the regular agenda. Does anyone have any questions, additions, changes to the agenda as presented?
Move to approve.
I got a motion by Rick to approve.
Second.
Second by Bruce. Is there any comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Passes five zero. Next is the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or anything in the consent agenda that needs to be pulled out or clarified? If not, I guess I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, second.
Second by Maggie Bass. If there's no other comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Next, we have public invited to be heard on matters on the agenda. Brian, it looks like you're the only one signed in, so if you were willing to state your name and address and give us your comments.
All right, I'm Brian Paulson, two zero six Forest Street, Selwest. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to speak on the proposed compensation study and its implications for city budget and the taxpayers. I reviewed the report and the city administrator's memorandum. While I appreciate the intent to make competitive pay for our employees, I must raise serious concerns about the long-term costs and the fairness of this plan. The city administrator is presenting this as a modest adjustment claiming it will only require about $5,000 in additional savings used from the savings what's beyond already slated. But this is a short-sighted view that ignores the true financial burden on our community in the coming years. Let's start with the immediate implementation cost. The study recommends a bring-to-new minimum or 3.3% increase approach, which would cost totaling over $214,000 just this year. That's not insignificant, even offset by the existing budget line items. But the real issue isn't this one-time hit. It's an ongoing escalation baked into the new pay matrix. The old system capped at 11 steps, which was just nine steps until recently, meaning the significant number of our long-term tenured employees, those who have been with the city for over a decade or more, were already topped out and no longer eligible for step increases. The proposal to extend this to 15 steps came not from Auto Solve itself, but from the city's own team who, quote, "expressed a desire for the step plan to increase from 11 to 15 steps to help support employee retention," per the study report on top of page nine. Now, 100% of those formerly capped positions will qualify for additional step increases over the next four years. A dramatic shift from the old matrix where only a portion of employees would be getting stepped annually. These steps are framed as rewards for performance, experience, and growth, but in practice, they're treated as automatic annual increments or more frequent. The city administrator noted that some employees have received more than one step per year. In council discussions at the recent special meeting, implied steps are given as a matter of course not tied to a performance matrix. The report provides no data on denial rates or specific performance criteria to support this, yet it extends the pay matrix based on the city's own request. This brings me to an inconsistency. While the study provides aggregate market data to support adjustments at the low end, showing the city 3.44% below market minimums, the low end isn't changing dramatically with averages around that figure. With the top end, where the greatest changes and increases occur through the city's requested expansion to 15 steps, lacks any targeted data to justify it. The report notes the city is only 1.68% below market maximums overall, yet it proceeds to inflate the top without evidence that our highest-paid rules are underpaid at that level. The focus adding four steps disproportionately benefits these long-term staff, who aren't the ones leaving for better opportunities. The study acknowledges that retention issues, but as the city staff clarified, none were due to retirements. Turnovers seem to be concentrated among newer, lower-paid workers, not the ventrins at the cap. By prioritizing growth at the top of the city's own urging, while recalculating the structure, this plan risks inflating costs without addressing the retention root causes. In the end, this isn't about denying our dedicated city employees fair compensation. They deserve it for their hard work, but it's about responsible stewardship of our tax dollars. Sticking with the old matrix or revisiting the city's requested step increases to align with market data would keep costs predictable. As it stands, this proposal could add hundreds of thousands of dollars in cumulative increases in the next few years. Our 2027 levy is projected to rise drastically, so not this one, but the next following years. I urge the council to reject this plan in its current form, demand data on the top-end market comparisons or true retention drivers, and explore alternatives that balance employee needs with fiscal foresight. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no other names on here, but I'll give anyone else an opportunity who would like to speak on something that's not on the agenda. Okay, if not, we'll move on to the next item. Tobacco lease appeal hearing. Josh, are you gonna lead this?
Yeah, I can lead this one. So, just as a brief background, on August 20th, 2025, Steve Binstock submitted an application for a tobacco license at 410 Main Street for Anna Tobacco and Smoke Shop. Following a comprehensive review and background check on September 26th, I did deny that application based on City Code 11703J2, which states that the following shall be grounds for denial of issuance or renewal of a license under this section. The following list is not exhaustive or exclusive. Part two, the applicant has been convicted within the past five years of a violation of any provisions of this chapter or violation of federal, state, or local law ordinance provisions, or other regulations relating to tobacco, tobacco-related devices, or electronic delivery devices. Now, I've included kind of the background information in your packet based off of the violation that I was noting occurred that was in violation of this particular section. And of note, the applicant is a 50% owner in the business that had a violation with the Office of Cannabis Management in 2023. Like, as I said, I've included a copy of that letter, as well as the administrative order and the Chapter 117 of our tobacco regulations. So, just of note, this application was the second application we'd received for a tobacco license at this address. Previously, Mr. Zahed had submitted for the license, and he is also a 50% owner of that business that had the violation, and so I had issued him a denial letter on August 19th on the same grounds. So, per Section 117.03(c), an applicant who receives a denial may appeal that denial directly to the city council. And on October 1st, Mr. Binstock did request an appeal of my denial. So, due to my denial, I will not be giving you a recommendation tonight since it is appealing my decision, but I have kind of laid out why I made that decision. So, I know the applicant is in the audience tonight if you certainly have any questions, and I can try to answer any as well.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
My basic question is the grounds for the request for the appeal. If you'd like to speak to that.
Yeah, you tapped up to the mic. Oh, I guess I should note, too, Joe Sathy with Kennedy and Graven is online as well if you have any legal questions.
Okay, thank you.
Trying to make this brief, but thanks for having me here tonight. So, we are asking for reconsideration based on kind of the overall industry at the time the violations occurred. Back in 2023, the industry, I think in Minnesota, had a flux of like inconsistencies with the, I think it's the percentage of hemp or canvas in products. So, we received, we were open for about one year at this time. We received all the products from Minnesota authorized distributors that sent us their product. They ship us their product, we have it on the shelves. OCM knew the industry was like in flux and not like specifically clear on what grounds every product, if it can or can't be sold. So, what happened, then OCM sent out inspections, and we had inspection, we had the product on our shelves, they were trying to teach us what we should and shouldn't sell. And they said, "We need to remove these products from your shelves." We agreed, you know, we removed them from the shelves, the sales floor, moved them to storage room in the back. And literally, they came out, I think three months later, I forget the months, but came back out, and we had no sales of those products, and we gave them the sales receipts, but they were on our premise still in the stockroom because we were trying to get credit for them because we didn't want to, we didn't know what to do. We just, we were trying to get credit, ship them back. We didn't do that correctly, so that's why we then had a violation of those products being on our premise. Now, since then, just since then, we've been operating for three years now with three different stores. We've gotten two different licenses in different cities since then. We've also received a license from the OCM themselves for a new dispensary. So, even the OCM has not withheld a new license from us for new businesses. So, I think the grounds for me, for us, is just that, to give you a clear picture, it was a, there's a timing in the industry that wasn't clear, and we failed. We failed, and then we, since then, have complied fully, have had zero violations since then. So, that's our appeal to you to ask for reconsideration of a tobacco license.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, I do.
Mr. Binstock?
The violation is them having it on their premise?
That's correct, from my understanding, yes.
And it wasn't out for sale, it was behind closed doors?
That's correct. That is, and we did contest it to some extent. We didn't want to, we're not going to go through court, we're not, I don't, we don't know how to contest that well, and this is tough for me, but OCM, we weren't going to try to contest it and just prove them wrong. We had it on our premise, and that was a mistake, it was wrong.
You knew about it.
I personally probably didn't, the managers, they had it in the stockroom. We were opening up a new store in Albert Leve, so yes, things get lost, and yes, it was on our premise, so we made that mistake.
Administrative order states that it was offered for sale.
Because we have, that's where, that's where I think we were contesting that it wasn't because being it on the premise. Now, there is probably like a way to either try to prove what I'm saying or something, but it was on the premise. That's why it was considered.
You didn't contest that it was not for sale.
We did contest it by showing them our sales receipts, showing no sales of that product. Now, I don't have all that here, and we can always dig in deeper and understand that there's truth or not truth behind what I'm saying.
But the administrative order stated that, and you didn't, you weren't successful in making your argument to them. Is that correct?
True, because we, I think we sent an email.
Okay.
And we didn't fight it.
I just want to be clear in the specifics here because you're saying you didn't have it for sale, and they're saying you did have it for sale.
It was on the premise, therefore, it could have been for sale.
Okay.
And that's 100%, I believe, exactly what they would, I think they would say as well, as long as I don't have that email, and I don't know how that was stated at that time, but I know that's what the, what was going on. We didn't, we didn't fight it. We just sent them an email saying, you know, there's no sales of that product.
And you proved to them that you had no sales by showing them your sales receipts?
I, can I look around? Do we know how that worked out?
Can you come up to the podium, please?
Sure.
Just so that we do have it on record?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, Stan O.
Hi.
Hi.
So, yes, we told them that we sent them the receipt for the month that we don't sell any THC product. And the reason that they say you guys were selling that because OCM says, if you have a product in the business, if it's in the storage or on the shelf, that means it's for sale. That was the only reason. So, they didn't have any proof that we had it on the shelf or upfront.
Or sold it.
Or sold it, so that was the only reason.
Question.
Understand the mistake.
But I guess I want to go back to the administrative order. They said they took it off of your shelves during the inspection.
Yep, they did, our storage shelves. They did take it from our storage shelves.
Oh, storage shelf.
And that's where it becomes a very awkward way to say shelves, sales, floor shelves.
So, they removed it from your building?
From our premise, yes.
Okay.
Yep, that's correct.
What was the timeframe that you got the letter, and then when you were trying to return it to the manufacturer and get credit for it? I mean, how long was it?
Trying is probably a strong word for me to agree, because I agree that trying is, how hard can you try to get rid of the product? It sat there, and we didn't know what to do, and we were just saying, "Let's go get credit for it." And we were trying, you know, it was three months, I believe, actually more than that. It was five months.
That seems like a really long time.
Correct, I agree.
You get that from a distributor, or do you get that from the manufacturer, or who are you trying to get credit from?
Distributors.
The distributor, and so they sell other products to you besides just that one that was illegal?
Yes.
Or, so my, I don't understand if they're coming into the store, why they couldn't just pick that up and credit.
Why don't they want to give us credit for it? We kept asking.
Well, I can understand that, but I guess, you know, if they want to continue to have your business, I would think that they would gladly pick up X amount of dollars for it.
A lot of dollars for it, it was a lot of dollars.
Okay, well, what's, in comparison to how much you buy over a year with them? I mean, they still want you to do business with their other products?
We still do business with them, you know? We sure do. And I agree with that, that, you know, I think it's a failure on our part. That's what I'm actually, I'm telling you, there's a failure on our part that we did destroy the product. And I, I'm not operating, I know Z operates it, but that was our failure. That we didn't destroy the product. Because taking it back to my house or something, I mean, we just, I didn't feel the, should have thrown it away right away if we didn't get credit for it.
Is credit normally given for products that you buy through that distributor on other products?
I believe so.
So, why wouldn't they give you credit on this one? I'm just, that just seems a little odd.
Discontinue, I don't, I.
Discontinue plus we open all this product, that's the reason. Because normally, if you buy product from them, and if you didn't unbox them, they will take it back. But if it's open, they won't take it. So, and also, this product was from OCM, they say we canceled this product. They had the same issues as well with the people that they bought from them. So, they were fighting with the actual people that they bought from them. So, that was the whole thing that was stopping us to just negotiate for all the.
retailers. Distributors. The retailers.
Because this product was not just one thing, it's like so many different products. Let's say it was drinks from different company, it was gummies from different companies, so a bunch of different company, but one distributor. They can't just take all of them back unless they have approval from them.
And I agree that there is a failure. So, I, what I also want to state then is, you know, since then, and that was, I think, a very poor industry reflection because there was so much flux of what's legal and what's not legal. So, I feel like there is a tough time there in the industry. We didn't, we failed to do what we were supposed to do by getting rid of it. So, 100%, that's why we got the violation. So, since then, though, we've been inspected, I mean, I don't want to say 10 times, I don't, I don't, but multiple.
Just got an inspection a couple days ago.
Multiple, multiple times. We've also had many, many stings with underage ID, like, what do you call it, when you walk in and try to get an underage sting? We've passed and complied with every, every operation that happened, so we've got no failure to, you know, compliance since then. So, we're looking to move, you know, we were a new company, new employees, we're running around, so we failed to, the significance of the situation to get rid of it, so.
Other than, other than running them out of town, is there a solution to this?
I wouldn't call it running out of town. So, this is basically them applying, this is them applying for their first tobacco license in town. So, it's whether, like I said, I denied the license per our code on those grounds, and they've appealed to you, and that's where we're at at this point.
I think the location, I don't think there's any other grounds, is what my understanding is, that it's, we're all in, you know, compliance with, I guess.
Correct, yes.
Nothing else other than just we had these violations, and again, you know, we've had it in two other cities since then, and we've got approval for licenses. And again, I'll state that OCM themselves issued us a new license for a new dispensary in the state of Minnesota. So, they do not even see it as a severe enough penalty to not allow us another license.
So, what is the shop actually, is it just a tobacco shop that you're applying for?
Correct.
So, it's not any THC or?
It's not actually, it's, so tobacco and hemp. It's not actual THC, so we applying for tobacco license and hemp license, two different types.
Yep, so if you remember right, so the, per our code, tobacco licenses come to me and are generally handled administratively. THC licenses come before you all. There was previously a submittal before you all with that first tobacco license, that was also a THC, and on those same grounds, you all denied that same THC license. So, they did not resubmit for a THC license, they've only resubmitted for a tobacco.
We thought it might help with the violation being a THC violation.
Can I ask, Tim, do you have any input?
I guess from, from my perspective, this is what the OCM does. This is their, this is their deal. They came in, they made, they made a ruling, and in the OCM's word, due to the serious and repeated nature of the violations, is my concern. You can have it on premise, you can do those things. My concern is you, you knew it was there, you knew you shouldn't have it. Like, why not take it off-site if you're going to be open for business, right?
Correct, that's correct.
Like, someone has an illegal gun, it's gone, right?
So, we failed, yeah, and I agree with that, and I think we can learn from it. We rationalized that, we got fined $6,000 for having it on-site. And so, I think the understanding that it was serious, and I understand the seriousness of it, and so does our other owner, and I think we actually have gotten rid of that employee that was running the store at that time, partly on this nature of this violation. So, I think we've done some steps, and we've proven going forward, we haven't had any other violations.
The items that were there and found illegally were of a very high potency.
I disagree.
Right, so they weren't, well, according to the OCM's report.
Higher than legal potency should be, yes.
Well, like by five, six, eight times.
The industry was selling all those products, 100%.
Well, the industry wasn't because it couldn't be sold in Minnesota. The products you had couldn't actually be sold in Minnesota.
So, those product, the Delta A and Delta N THC, THCP, HRC, it's been legal, I mean, was not legal, like right now, every smoke shop selling kratom and hydroxy, which is not legal. I mean, there's not FDA approved, but every smoke shop, gas station, and tobacco shop, they still lose product unless if there's something new law came, and they say, "Oh, you can't sell this product anymore." So, this Delta A THC and HRC product was selling in every single smoke shop, and this type of violation, we were not the only one, or probably 100 different smoke shop got that kind of violation. So, when the OCM approved a new law that in Minnesota, you can sell only 0.3% THC, 0.3% THC, and that's it. So, that's why, because we have product before that, which was higher than that, was 50, was 99% THC, but there was nothing against it. So, the city was coming all the time, there was no OCM exist that time, OCM just found in 2023. There was only from hemp, something, I forgot the name, there was one office that was taking care of that product, and we never had anything before that, so. And I'm sure, like, even the smoke shops here, all the smoke shop was selling those product.
They weren't because we checked, we do, we do checks every.
Yeah, and that's the first time we've heard of that, you know?
No, they're absolutely not selling that, we can guarantee that.
After 2023, yes, no one can sell it because the OCM stopped, they told you can't sell this one anymore. Before that, yes, it was.
Prior to that, they were.
Well, my concern again is that we have, we have a city ordinance, right? It's laid out in there, we do a background check. If we start to deviate from what our ordinance and our code says, I think that becomes a slippery slope for the city.
Because the code says that those are grounds for.
Correct.
Grounds for it, it's not that it needs to be.
Correct.
Correct, because it's the option that is there, should you guys choose that option?
But then we start, we start picking and choosing.
Correct.
Every time, and how do we, how do we choose one and not the other?
I'm ready to discuss this with us here pretty soon.
Yeah.
This is the part that concerns me, the, when I'm on page two or three. The administrative order also notes that the administrative penalty was assessed due to the serious and repeated nature of the violations, and that three violations were deemed severe due to the threat to public health with examples, including edibles more than twice the legal limit of THC per serving. So, I don't know if a $6,000, that sounds substantial to me, but I don't, I have nothing else to compare it to, but those words right there are concerning to me. I mean, there was multiple violations, they were deemed very severe by the state, and that they were repeated nature of the violations, so it's, had been ongoing.
And it should be considered delta force, is that correct? Is it delta? Variety?
Yeah, there's different levels of delta. So, these, these deltas that were in the shop were of a very high THC potency above what is legal to sell in Minnesota.
Maybe the city attorney could chime in. I don't know if you've ever seen violations before, if you could give us a reference, if $6,000 is substantial, that obviously would add more weight if the state came down heavier. If it's on the low end, maybe. Oops, oops.
Was it me?
That was Mitch. You're on mute right now.
Yes.
There you go.
Thank you very much. I will try to not speak in the echo chamber. Can you all hear me now?
Yes.
I can give my opinion that I do not know the scale for violations for these products from the OCM. So, I can't, I can't provide that specific additional context tonight. I can say that the language that you're citing, that in the citation appears to be a serious use of language, you know, the state in citations chooses the language carefully, and I don't think would be raising their choice of works to the level if it weren't in fact serious.
All legal language, I think, should be serious, and I think that's how it's written. That's why they don't say, "Oh, we just kind of think it's wrong." Of course, they're going to write that it's a serious nature, and we agree that it's a serious nature, just away the, any statutes that are out there, so. But I think there's a picture that needs to be clear, too, is just a grounds for an understanding of what was happening, how we failed, and the just nature of what was going on. And there's, we weren't trying to push a product out, we just incorrectly handled the product, and therefore, we got violated, and we was fined.
And the fine that you say $6,000, so, and the OCM page, it says, after 2023, any smoke shop that sells those product is going to have $10,000 fine. That was the actual amount, like for any smoke shop. But for us, because we came the second time.
They reduced it.
They reduced the fine for us. And the only reason they reduced it because we were not selling those product, it was just on the storage on the back.
Okay. Any other questions to our attorney or to these gentlemen? Okay.
I'm sympathetic to your circumstances, but, I mean, there's got to be accountability, and I understand that you may have made a mistake, but there still needs to be accountability for your actions and what actually happened. And so, I'm not in favor of supporting the, an appeal on this, but it's just my position.
Exactly the same words.
Okay. Any comments, other comments? Okay, I guess, then I guess I'll look for a motion.
I'll move them to deny the appeal.
Okay, I got a motion by Rick.
I'll second that.
Second by Bruce. Any other questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? Okay, passes four zero. Sorry. Thank you. Next on the agenda is an update.
Of note, Mr. Mayor, you said four zero?
Five zero, excuse me. I was using the wrong math.
Just wanted to make sure Alyssa didn't come. Just wanted to make sure Alyssa didn't come barging in my office tomorrow morning.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure there'll be more than that, thank you. Okay, next is an update from our Scott County attorney. Welcome. I see you brought your heavy up with you too.
I guess I did, uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Again, Ron Hosevar, I'm the Scott County Attorney. I'm here to give you just a brief update on the office and answer any questions that you may have regarding uh, what's going on. Um, we got two county attorneys we're probably dealing with here, but um, we do have a great relationship with our neighboring county attorney. And we do share uh, information and share cases when, when um, need be and cover for each other if need be. So, uh, just to kind of give you a quick update um, on the office. We're approximately, uh, we're a pretty big office, we're approximately um, twenty-two attorneys right now. Um, we got two paralegals, four victim witness coordinators, a one office manager. I have a um, drug and alcohol prevention coordinator, uh, which runs our choose not to use, you may or may not have heard of that, it's a program that um, I run out of my office where we um, educate primarily youth around the county to make the best choices in life, keep off of drugs and, you know, drinking and driving, that kind of thing. Um, it's been quite effective. Um, in the last, in the last year, we've um, put vape detectors into Jordan High School, um, Prior Lake High School, um, Shakopee High School, and right now they're going into the um, Shakopee Middle School. We provided um, five two thousand dollar scholarships to graduating seniors um, who have dealt with either themselves or their family with chemical dependency of some sort. And they wrote essays and to determine um, how they rewarded the scholarship. And we, and how they dealt with those issues, uh, either with themselves or with their family. And we awarded ten thousand dollars, five thousand dollar scholarships to those students for use in their um, post-secondary education. Uh, we have our one, we are a five oh one three C. We have one fu- primary fundraiser um, each year, which is a uh, uh, golf, golf tournament held out legends in Prior Lake. And we get sponsors, we pr- we um, get prizes and money for the sponsorship. And that's, we're entirely funded through, through that, it's got no um, levy dollars at all. Go into choose not to use is primarily if the five oh one three C. Um, that's, that's where the drug and alcohol coordinator position is, and also have what, about approximately seventeen support staff. So.
And you don't use a course in Scott County?
We don't what?
You don't use the course in Scott County?
It's in Scott County.
Oh, Legends is?
It's in, yeah, it's in Prior Lake.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'll, I'll let you off the hook there.
Legends in Prior Lake, yeah. Um, yes, that's kind of a brief overview of the county. Um, city attorney cases, I only have uh, last year's twenty twenty-four um, numbers. It's been pretty, pretty static with New Prague, it hovers right around um, a hundred, twenty twenty-one, a hundred and eighteen files. This is strictly Scott County, not um, so we're, so we got a hundred and eighteen, twenty twenty-two, ninety-seven, twenty-three, um, eighty-one, twenty-two, um, twenty twenty-four. Um, it was like ninety-seven, I believe. So it's pretty static around the hundred mark, so um, chief in his department do a great job, keep in law and order. Uh, we work very well together. Um, you probably know there's the Scott Joint Prosecution Association, uh, which you are a part of. Um, so everything in Scott County, any, any crime that happens in Scott County comes through my office, whether it's a juvenile, up to uh, um, I prosecuted a grandfather who was eighty-eight last year for crime sex, so um, all ages, no matter where the crime occurs, whether it's here in New Prague, at Valley Fair, Canterbury, the casino, everything comes through my office. Um, so we're busy, we call it a one-stop shop, so we believe the Scott Joint Prosecution Association works very well. Uh, police officers don't have to guess who to go to to answer, get their questions answered, who to go to regarding their files, to know where to come. Um, every chief, most uh, uh, most of the line officers, patrol officers um, have my number. I get called all the time, which is no problem, I, I enjoyed that, I enjoy getting, getting to know the officers. We also on weekends have an on-call attorney, so if something happens on a weekend where they need to know whether they need to get a search warrant, uh, or whether they can kick in the door, or what they have to do, we're, we're always on-call and unavailable to assist the officers. Um, I recently had a meeting with uh, um, Mr. Ted Slaff and your, and your chief regarding ordinances and all that's been an issue um, for New Prague, uh, it's been an issue for my office, it's been an issue, you're not the only community. Ordinances are a difficult situation because frankly, the consequences and the procedure that goes through the court system, in my opinion, is completely inadequate for um, what you're dealing with with ordinances. Um, I have conversations with the judges on a constant basis, telling the judges, you know, this, when it gets, when it gets to the point where your ordinance violations come to my office, your people have dealt with the violators numerous times on their own. So when we gets to our office, we try to enforce that to the judges, that this is a situation that has been dealt with, judge, you're not the first stop, you're probably the seventh or eighth stop. Um, so we're trying to get buy-in from the, from the court, um, but it's, it's frankly um, difficult because judges, you know, see the ordinance violation and then they see their next case as a rape. Or their next case, you know, is a DUI. So we're doing what we can with education. In the last year, I've made ordinance violations more of a priority than they have been in the past. I have one of my um, o- um, one of my lawyers taking the lead on the ordinances. So each city now, each city, their ordinance person has that attorney's number, has that attorney's name, and could, can go directly to that attorney to get answers. Um, so there should be no, um, kind of trying to find the right person on, on far as what's going on. So we're making an effort both in the enforcement and with the information sharing to get better results for the ordinances, but it's a, it's an uphill battle, but we're going to continue to fight it. Um, I think we had a good discussion when we did have our discussion. And uh, we're hoping to see some, not only improvement in New Prague, but, but countywide, uh, with the ordinance situation. I'd like to answer any questions you have.
Yeah, may, maybe I don't understand it, but if you just decide to prosecute or deal with an ordinance situation, does a judge or a court have the ability just to ignore it?
No, I mean, my office, if we chose to, could ignore it.
Right, but I mean, if you've taken it that far and you're suggesting, or you're saying that you're trying to get buy-in from the court, that means the court is either putting it aside, not addressing it, or, or, or not even, or is it dead letter office kind of thing, or?
They can't ignore it, um, they have to deal with it in one way or the other. Um, but what, what we see them doing, which I try, which I'm trying to get them away from doing, is they see a person for ordinance violation first appearance at their arraignment. And the person says, you know, judge, we just, I just, give me another two months, I'll take care of it.
Right, right.
Judge says, okay, I'll give you, and I'm like, no, judge, they've already had seven chances with the city of New Prague's ordinance people to take care of it, they haven't, but the judges think, oh, this is the first time I saw him, so.
Okay, that's a better understanding when you say trying to get the court to buy in, yeah.
Yeah.
I, 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 I've seen that, so I get that.
Yeah. And um, frankly, we've run into situations also where people that were in violation of the ordinance, they come in, you know, they pay their fine, they go home and don't do anything about it until the next ticket. I mean, they can choose to do that, it's, that's why I think the ordinances are they're effective for people who take it seriously, but if people, you know, ignore it, ignore it and ignore it, we're limited on what we can do, because it's not going to rise to the level of a felony, ever.
Right.
Um, so we're stuck with what we have, and I think, and it's an, it's an imperfect system, no question about it. I wish I could give you better news on that, but it is an imperfect system. Alls we can do, and like I've been telling, um, each, each city, keep ticketing them, that's all we can do, keep ticketing them, we'll take them, we'll take them to court, and we'll keep stressing it to the, to the court. But we're gonna, again, I'm going to continue my efforts with my attorneys, uh, with the court system and keep pushing forward, but I don't think you should, and I'm not sure your people should just, should give up and say, oh, no, nothing's going to happen anyway, but keep going forward.
How often do you not prosecute uh, ordinance violation that's brought to you?
Hardly ever, I mean, if we get, if we get information from your people um, that there's an ordinance violation, they get us the paperwork, it's gonna, we're gonna take care of it. I don't recall, we might, we might say, uh, well, we need a little bit more information, can you get us this? That could happen, but we're never going to say on an ordinance violation, no, not this, not this time. I mean, I can't say it would never happen, but I'm a pretty aggressive prosecutor in my office, I kind of pride myself on being an aggressive prosecutor for all things. Um, so we're not going to just out of hand get rid of something.
And just in my mind, I'm trying to clarify, do we actually take Lee Seward County to somewhere else, or don't they prosecute all, all city limits?
We have jurisdiction for Scott County, and I think it's a fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred feet from the Scott County border we can into the neighboring county.
Yeah, so it would be the, oh, anything that would be a felony on the Lee Seward County side goes to Lee Seward County, but an ordinance violation is in a felony level offense, so all felony level, or all misdemeanor offenses within the city would go to Scott County's attorney's office.
Okay, thank you.
Even on felony level offenses, the Seward County attorney has at times called us and say, because it might, might, might be more convenient, hey, you guys want to handle this? Say, yeah, sure.
Oh, they can just, you can just make an agreement to take it?
We can make an agreement, we would, we would have to go and do it in Lee Seward County.
Okay.
But we could have our people do it, and this might be more convenient as far as victims and officers, that type of thing.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Come on.
No, I think you answered, I think the, the issue that we had was the ordinance issue, is that our people were somewhat kind of frustrated.
Yeah.
That the ordinance has come up and then they never.
Yeah.
It's, it, perception was that they didn't go any farther once they got to your office.
Yeah, and you're not alone in that frustration, I had a meeting last week with actually a homeowners association in another, in another part of the county, that they were having difficulties also, and it was, it was the same conversation. So you're not alone, but I think uh, I think a lot got cleared up with our meeting um, a couple of weeks ago. And uh, we're, my office is going to keep going forward and keep educating and keep pushing.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much, and we're nothing like a homeowners association.
No comment on that.
Can you just comment on the type of activity you've seen in the last nine months uh, in Scott County as far as what is the prosecutions changing, the level of criminal activity different, or is it pretty much the standard? And I, I, I do think that general population don't understand the serious issues that are happening here, but.
I wouldn't say it's um, changing, we are seeing um, file numbers decreased slightly, I think we're to see that reverse itself in here in the next year or two, unfortunately, just based on um, um, e- external factors that you guys probably all figure out. Um, we're seeing more serious stuff, I mean, because we don't have any publications hardly anymore in Scott County. My office right now is prosecuting four murder cases. Um, people are, you know, probably completely unaware, I think we had five, but one settled last week, on a way, so we had five murder cases we were prosecuting. And I hate to phrase it this way, but our bread and butter are domestic, domestic assault and DUIs. Um, those never go away, um, and they're, and they're the, they're the tough ones. Domestic cases, people think, oh, it's a misdemeanor, it's not a felony, it's a misdemeanor case. Those are probably some of the toughest cases to prosecute uh, for very, for various reasons, which I could give you a um, a class on for a couple of hours if you were interested. Um, but those, those are very tough cases, and also um, like you said, I've got my bodyguard with me today. Um, she hears it from me constantly, um, even though file numbers are down, the, the, the volume of discovery from when I started as an attorney prosecuting cases, where we'd have a paper file, you know, on a serious case, maybe an inch thick. The discovery that we have on today's cases, even on a basic domestic, on a basic DUI, is outrageous with all the body cameras, uh, with all the technology. Uh, you go into a case on a, on a, on a rape case now, they go into and do a search warrant, they've got info, technology information on all the cell phones they find, all the laptops they find, all the iPads they find, all the computers they find. All that information is getting analyzed by forensic um, IT people and coming back into our office. And we're, we're paperless now, but all that information comes into our office and has to get compiled and disclosed to defense attorneys. You know, you got an incident where five police officers respond to, you've got five body cameras. They all have to get downloaded, they have to get transcribed. And it's, it's ca- it's chaos at times, you got, um, let's say there's a fight in a bar, you know, trying to get those body cameras um, transcribed, everyone yelling and swearing and sc- scuffles going on. So there's just, that's, that's kind of the big thing that's changed, I think, in law enforcement and prosecution is just the sheer amount of information that we have. It helps us a lot, I mean, body cameras are great, especially uh, you know, there's an accusation against a police officer, you know, they come and say, oh, so-and-so, what officer did this to me, use inappropriate. Play the body camera, there you go, sorry, see you later, complaint's gone away. And it helps us uh, get convictions, DUIs, you know, they're doing the, doing the tests, we can see them pleading for the jury, the person's staggering, and all that kind of stuff is great. But it's, it's voluminous and it takes time and it takes money. Um, like we have a, a case out of the casino hardly ever go to trial because it's all on tape, it's all on video, I shouldn't say tape, I'm dating myself, but it's all, it's all there. So, but again, it's uh, that's the biggest change, is just the sheer amount of information that we're dealing with on, on a basic case.
Obviously, the, the appeal we had, i- is that industry uh, creating a lot of issues for your office?
Not so much yet, I think it's more of an issue like you have your, your city attorney online, it's probably more of an issue for them at this point. Um, when, but we have had similar issues and that's the one you just heard, um, in Shakopee with an appeal. Um, but I think it's going to be more of an issue once the state gets this act together and actually starts dispensaries. Um, I think that's going to be a bigger issue in my office for criminal things going on. I don't, I don't have as rosy of an outlook as some people in the state do as far as the legalization of marijuana, that's just my opinion. Um, so I think you're gonna, I think we're going to see some significant increase in offenses based on that.
I agree with you when we predicted that.
Yep, I agree, hundred percent.
Okay, any other questions? Well, I appreciate your time, thanks for coming to New Prague.
Thank you. Yeah, any, anytime you want any more information, just let me know.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thanks Leslie. Uh, item seven, uh, there is no public hearings at this date, next city engineering projects, um. You're back.
I am back, yeah, you're gonna see a lot of me here. Uh, so I have two things in front of council tonight, one is my uh, project updates, just uh, current SCH projects we're working on. Um, I'm not sure if there's anything that uh, anyone would like clarity on that. Um, otherwise, I'm just going to move ahead towards the uh, two thousand and twenty-six street.
I have a question on the city center of Storm Pond.
Sure.
Did we determine that's, we can use those funds yet?
I don't want to answer that.
We, we are still working through that, um, as you remember, we did contract Bolton and Mink.
Yep.
Um, and so we are determining exactly what that scope is, that of work they can do and what we're, we can do in-house to not have to spend additional funds, so. Um, but it, it's looking like there may be a portion we can use, we're just trying to figure out how much of it we can potential, hopefully be able to pay for all of it, but we're still working on that.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Oh, that's just fine. Uh, so, so moving ahead, um, I do have a proposal in front of you for the two thousand and twenty-six street improvement project. Um, this uh, project area be located on Tenth Avenue Southeast, um, south of First Street Southeast, all the way down to the county, county road. Um, this project was initially considered two years ago um, to be part of the uh, two thousand and twenty-four project. We did move it aside after completing the feasibility report, um, and decided to tackle that at a different time, just doing all that at one time would have been a very large project. So uh, now uh, we are at the point of um, looking at the two thousand and twenty-six project. Um, at this point, uh, largely looking at an update of previously completed data, updating the um, assessment rolls, updating cost estimates, updating maps, but not necessarily doing a start from scratch, put everything. Just more putting everything together into a, a new memo with all this updated information. Um, changes that haven't made. Changes that haven't made. I do not, did notice a quick, a little typo in my, my letter here, but we are looking at a trail improvement potentially on the west side, Tenth Avenue Southeast, more just a pavement improvement. So that is, uh, a change from the, uh, initial, um, review of the area that was done two years ago. And then, uh, probably the most significant change, well, not necessarily change, but, um, previously a center, um, center median was considered, and at this point it's not. This is looking at a mill and overlay type of an improvement, uh, with the most significant work being a potential, uh, mini roundabout, um, at Third Street Southeast. So, uh, with that said, um, I do have a proposal in front of you for a, uh, not hourly not to exceed fee of fifteen thousand dollars to provide these services, uh, with a schedule of, uh, completing the feasibility report over about the next six weeks, um, and then moving towards public hearing and ordering the project in December.
I just have a question for Josh. Josh, are we talking on these mill and overlays that we're gonna be assessing the neighbor, are they houses on that street?
Uh, that's something we can certainly discuss. It's been a hot minute since I've looked at the assessment policy. I believe there is something in there about potentially being able to assess. It would be a reduced amount over what our standard assessment is. Generally, what happens is it will assess and we won't be back at the street for fifteen, or not fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years or so. And so, uh, and then what we do is if we decided to go back and assess, you'd be assessing a smaller amount because the mill and overlay is obviously a, a cheaper than a full reconstruct. So it isn't our policy that we can, but that is certainly up to the council as to whether we want to go forward with that. As I said, I know when we put it in there, our thought was it's gonna be potentially twenty, twenty-five, even thirty years before we get back to that street. Most of those people don't live on the street when the original assessment was done on that reconstruct, and yet they are getting what is down to a new road. Now, I know that obviously there are people that do live on that street for thirty-some plus years, but.
But that street, most of it's backyard.
Most of its backyards. I don't know if there'd be, would there even be any assessments on this?
There are a few, very few properties proposed for assessment with this. There are some, um, corner properties primarily, uh, that would have a side frontage on the, on the, on the street. There, I, I don't remember the number, but it's a pretty small number. There's a large number of properties abutting the area, but just, uh, very few would actually, um, would receive benefit enough to, to be assessed. So, uh, at the time we completed the feasibility report two years ago previously, we did include assessments for all these, all the properties that fell into the policy, um, whether fronting or side, side frontage on a, on the, um, the street. So, um, at that point, we were proposing assessments.
I, I will say, now correct me if I'm wrong, that's not necessarily a decision that's being made tonight.
Correct.
So we, yeah, we, and so it's certainly something we can talk about going forward as to, um, why it's in our policy and whether we wanna keep it in there or whether we want, and what we wanna do with that, so.
Well, who made the decision that we weren't gonna do the center median?
Uh, it's, it's a cost decision at this point. The, the.
No, is that, does that come from you? Because I don't recall, at one point we talked about it, but we never really voted on it or made a decision or got any, how much it would cost. But I think a couple of us were in favor of it or liked the idea of it.
Absolutely. So if that's, uh, as I mentioned, this is more of an update of what's previously completed work. That work is still there. If, if, uh, we wanted to revisit the medians, it certainly can be done. I think, um, as far as who, who eliminated, I think it's just the discussion we have had right now with staff is that we're proceeding with a mill and overlay more simple improvement. We have, uh, completed, um, grant requests trying to get money to pay for the median, um, and that has not, you know, been successful to this point. But, uh, if, uh, council decisions needed and that or council, uh, recommendations needed, then we would, we'd go to that step, I guess. But as of right now, um, the, the proposal I have in front of you is to update everything towards a mill and overlay type of improvement.
I think to piggyback on that, Sean, I know when we initially discussed it, we said, hey, we think there may be money available for this. And so it would be an improvement that could help us slow down traffic out there as it flies at what seems like real fast out there. And as that funds of potential grants dried up, it was a, well, were we linked to this or are we just now gonna move forward with the original thought of putting a, certainly putting a roundabout at Third and, and Tenth to kind of help slow traffic right there so people can cross. But, uh, certainly on the table, I just know that, uh, I think if, what do we talk about? It potentially would have been cheaper if we'd done it the first time.
Yes.
Because you'd have just less pavement out there, but now it'll be slightly more expensive than just a mill and overlay because you'd be adding curb.
Was, was that concept a median all the way down to twenty-nine?
I think we'd, we, we, we'd talked all the way from all the way to just spot medians as well.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I can't imagine it going that far.
And I think some of those, you see them, I mean, you see them in some cities where they'll then plant trees along that median and it kind of becomes a more, almost like a boulevard type feel. And, because we were thinking of way, in a lot of transportation planning, they use these to, it makes the road feel smaller. So everyone just slows down a little bit because they don't feel like they can go as fast. So, yeah, we'd, we'd talked full-length medians to just potentially on intersection medians to help create a crossing at those and everything in between too.
So does that require a full reconstruct then, or is it just part of it's mill and overlay and now you're just adding a median?
So with, so the, I won't say the complicating factor, but adding a median, uh, requires removal of a center about sixteen feet of pavement. Installation of curb, patching, everything back together. Uh, using MinDOT funds, there's only a limited amount of funds you can use towards, um, towards landscaping, because this is a state aid route. So, um, anything, if it was to be a landscaped, uh, median, most of that would not be eligible for funding. Um, I don't recall the amount, but it was, um, the, the amount required versus the amount that'd be fundable through state aid would be, um, it'd be a pretty small amount that you get funding for to see that to pay, pay up the difference on that. As far as what medians could look like out there, uh, we did approach it from full length to just looking at intersections right now. Our expectation we're gonna look at R R F Bs or other types of enhancements to crosswalks to make the, um, the crosswalks, uh, a little better. And, uh, that could potentially include some center medians at intersections or some other smaller concentrated areas or, or doing something more extensive. But, um, we've kind of looked at both options right now with our previous, uh, approach to it. So I think, um, yeah, if it's gonna be updating costs on those types of things, just to prove that both options, I don't think that'd be a huge undertaking. I might, for updating those costs, I might be needing a little bit of an amendment, I might end up with an amendment to, um, for the extra time put into updating costs on the second option with more medians. But, um, I do think we could certainly look at that.
Is there a conceptual drawing or something that we?
Yeah, the conceptual drawings are all, uh, provided in the two thousand and twenty-four street project feasibility report.
Okay.
So that's all completed and completed data.
And I can pull those up and send them to you guys too, if you want me to.
Yeah, so the biggest difference right now from that point to where we are right now is, is largely just gonna be, um, the updates to cost to, to present value. Um, and then updating, um, doing new public hearings and doing all the four twenty-nine process. Now, I will say if, if the state does elect not to do assessments on this project, uh, the four twenty-nine process does go away. So we wouldn't have to necessarily go through with, uh, we'd still do neighborhood meetings, but we don't need to follow, we don't need to follow the public hearing process. So there could be some simplification, I guess, if, if that is how the project does end up proceeding.
I recall that, no, this is, I don't know how many years ago that we had a lot of instances that people would slide off and into those fences on that curb. Now, was there something addressed? Again, I wasn't around in twenty twenty-four, addressed to maybe eliminate that? Or? Well, you know, they, around the curb, people were jumping the curb. They were going too fast and slippery, and they went right into the neighbors' fences right off there.
Oh, you mean they're just south of Third? I'm trying to think of where.
They just south of Fifth Street or in the.
Yeah.
Yes, that was addressed. That was addressed.
In this, in the plan?
No, before that even. We, so that happened back in the, we had it happen three years in a row that just south of Fifth Street on the curve, all those fenced-in backyards. We had, um, three years in a row, uh, we had resident, uh, somebody wake up to a vehicle in their backyard. So back in twenty nineteen-ish, um, we changed all the signage. We changed this by, uh, speed limit around those curves. And then just public work has, uh, spent more time in that when it comes to assaulting and stuff like that, that is addressed. So, so it's been six years. We have not had any issues. Um, we have not had any calls that I know of from the police department about any speeding or people hitting the curb or anything. So I think we have addressed that. But just to back up a little bit, when, um, these medians and all that, um, it's not like we're just throwing out the mediums and we're just milling overlaying and we're not doing anything. Me and Chris have worked very closely even with Ken and, uh, Josh, but we are still looking at how to make the road safer. It's not like we're just giving up and just throw some new tar on. We're looking at improvements on every intersection, on, um, pedestrian crossing, how to get traffic to slow, uh, slow down around curves. That's, that can be done without medians. Medians are probably the most effective way, but they're the most expensive way. Um, so there is alternatives that we're looking at it. So I just don't want the council to think that we just gave up on making the road safe. That's, I've said that almost every, uh, construction project, um, we've done is, our number one goal is how to make it safer for pedestrians and vehicles, um, that this Tenth Avenue would be no different. That, that is our number one goal is to keep the cost down and make it as safe as possible.
Is that the original, uh, road?
Uh, Tenth Avenue?
Yeah.
Yes, besides all the patches that public works has done.
And how, when was that?
That's been done in like five phases. So the first phase is done in, uh, two thousand, um, and then all the way up to oh-nine, I wanna say, connected to tw- uh, twenty-eight. Oh-six.
Okay.
So the oldest section will be twenty years by the time we get to it. And that, I mean, again, during the study, we are gonna look at what needs to be just a mill and overlay and what needs a, a reclaim of blacktop. And, I mean, there's a lot of options that go into, we're in such the early phases of this on how to make this road safe and what needs to be done. And this is approval to have Chris and staff work with getting that, uh, moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
I don't recall, but may, uh, maybe you can guess what, what's the percentage state aid will pay for this? How much is coming from our general fund and how much?
So, so it, as a, uh, depends what the project ends up looking like. If it ends up as a, uh, I'm gonna call vanilla, vanilla project, mill and overlay, it's a hundred percent eligible costs. Uh, if it's adding in the vegetation, as I noted earlier, vegetation is only, um, I wanna say something like seven percent of the project costs can be, um, related to landscaping. So if that was the approach where you did landscape, landscape, uh, center medians, only a portion would be eligible for state aid. Otherwise, um, majority of the project and not all the project should be stated eligible. Now, I'll take that back and talk about the Third Street, uh, um, intersection. So, um, if you do follow state aid process, uh, you are required to do either a, um, intersection control, um, study, basically a traffic study, uh, or a roundabout justification report. Um, those reports are somewhere in twenty to thirty thousand dollar range, depending on what's involved in it. And, uh, if you use stated funds, you do need to have those reports completed prior to doing that work. Some of the discussions we've had is if, uh, uh, we proceeded the work without doing those reports and just put that money towards construction, essentially, uh, instead of using it towards, um, using your state aid funds is that you wouldn't need to fa- uh, to complete those, those other studies. You can go straight to the, um, the roundabout construction.
And the medians, are they part of state aid or are they, are they on the nickel of the city?
Uh, if the medians, medians as part of the roundabout would be probably non-eligible if you don't proceed with those other things. Uh, medians, if you do proceed with, uh, that option, especially to the south of that, uh, those should be a state aid eligible.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I guess.
Chris, if we were gonna include, I guess, question of the council sounded like if we wanted to include potential cost estimates for the medians, that we'd have to revise this. Is that correct?
I would come back with a fee amendment if that's a preference, um, and I guess one they may to consider in the next, I don't wanna say, council made the decision on it, but some of our time in here, a good chunk of our time in here is, is to updating the assessments and, uh, updating the, doing a public hearing, go through that process. I'd probably say if the project did not proceed along that path, um, there would be enough funding available for me to do updated cost estimates on, on the, um, on the center median option. I understand that council may not make that decision prior to skinny that level. Uh, I will note that I did not bring a resolution tonight for, um, uh, ordering the feasibility report, so that'll just need to be completed prior to ordering the project. So, um, there's a little bit of time as far as following a four twenty-nine process. So if there needs be consideration prior to next council meeting, as far as whether or not it proceeds to four twenty-nine or realistically prior to, um, a public hearing in mid-November, that'd be, uh, something we wanna, yeah, I guess, talk about if you wanna follow through with assessments or not, or just complete the feasibility report and then make a decision afterwards.
I guess my personal opinion, if, before we spend money on the, the median issue, I guess I'd rather have Matt make a recommendation of, based on what he's said and other opportunities to try to make it safe. If, if our own city person is recommending that we do a study or spend that money in that way, if it's a good idea. But I guess that's what I would rather approach it as amendment af- after Matt's had a chance to.
Sure.
Make a recommendation or something on it.
Well, not only did it help with safety, but it was aesthetically in a important part of town.
I don't remember the conversation. I, I, so I'm trying to visualize. That's a long median, but.
Yeah, I, I, I couldn't tell you when it was a couple of years ago when we knew this was coming down the project. And, you know, I'm throughout the metro area, and I don't care if I'm in Woodbury or Plymouth or Maple Grove, there's nice boulevards with
Yeah.
center medians that are landscaped and look fantastic. It dresses up an entire area and it adds some credibility to the, to the town, I think.
With, with vegetation.
Some type of vegetation with medians, trees, um.
Oh, we're going full circle. This, this town really didn't appreciate trees and sidewalks for many years. Now we're talking about vegetation.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? I guess I'll look for a motion to approve, uh, the hourly rate not to exceed fifteen thousand.
Hourly.
Right, isn't that?
Hourly not to exceed fifteen thousand.
Yeah, hourly not to exceed fifteen thousand. Okay, I got a motion by Rick.
I'll second.
Second by Maggie. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Number ten, there's no ordinance for introductions. Number eleven, no ordinance for adoption. So twelve, um, we have some resolutions to look at. Ken, are you gonna be tampering the?
Give you the quick overview. So we have a resolution tonight for, uh, unpaid, uh, property maintenance charges and another one for unpaid utility bills. Both of those are in the packet tonight. Um, generally speaking, uh, we're a little lower, um, than where we were last year for our unpaid property, uh, maintenance, um, about half what we were in twenty twenty-four at this time. About a thousand dollars of the two thousand dollars is an, uh, administrative fee that we have, um, to cover our time to write the letters and do follow-up to get, uh, the payment on those things from mowing yards to cleaning up junk or ultimately, uh, as the county attorney noted, uh, bring, um, citations forward and try to get those cleaned up that way. Uh, for the municipal utility charges, we have, um, a little over seventy-five hundred dollars for the property tax roll, which is up slightly from last year. But, uh, every day, some of those get paid, and until we actually assess those to the county next week, I'm sure both mowing, uh, property maintenance charges and utility bill charges will be, um, continue to be paid. But we'll get, uh, all that are unpaid by that time, uh, to the, uh, count, respective counties. And we would just look for your approval, uh, for these two resolutions here tonight.
So, um, you say you're gonna put these, give them these to the counties next week?
Yeah, we have to, actually formally, uh, provide the copy and certify them by the fifteenth of October.
Okay.
So basically, everybody needs to pay by the fifteenth. The search counties may be a little more lenient on payments after that if, if they, uh, people ask about it. But technically by state law is the deadline on October fifteenth.
So if, if they get sent to the county for processing and someone, then someone has to deal with the county to pay it, or do they pay?
That is theoretically how it should work, but in past, past practice, a lot of times the counties will say, hey, talk to the city. If they'll take the payment, we'll, we'll go ahead and let you work through them.
Okay.
But it, it, that varies a little bit between each of the counties on their exact timing.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just on the, I think it's the second resolution on page forty-four. The legal description has a, looks like a typo note. And I'm not sure if you wanna make sure you take that out before you deliver it or.
On page forty-four?
On my page forty-four. On the.
Oh, yep.
Note to delete this if typo is, is in the original.
Yep, we'll take care of that.
You want these approved separately then?
Yes, separately, I agree.
Different resolutions.
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash one zero dash zero six dash zero one, approving certification of mowing property maintenance charges to property tax roll.
Yeah, I'll second that. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, passes five zero. The next resolution, I guess I'll make the motion to approve number twenty-five dash one zero dash zero six dash oh-two for unpaid municipal utility charges, uh, excluding electric, because by law we cannot do that.
For the ones that are renters.
Rent, yes, okay.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Got a second by Maggie Bass. Any other questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Passes five zero. I assume you're gonna take the next one, Ken, the fee schedule?
I will, um, so kinda to continue on with our continued discussions regarding lower potency hemp and cannabis. Learned from the Office of Cannabis Management last week, or actually the week prior, that we finally had clarification that we can indeed charge a initial and annual renewal fee for a low potency hemp edible retailer. So if you remember, we currently have a license process at a local level for the lower potency hemp edible retailers, which would be basically some of the products that the tobacco shop operators were mentioning tonight that are below that certain threshold of point three percent. The state, like I said, literally about two weeks ago, said, yes, you can have a registration at the local level, which we passed an ordinance for within the past year. We did not know we could charge a fee, and they have confirmed, yes, we can charge a fee. So that fee is a hundred and twenty-five dollars for the initial and then every annual renewal. So we are recommending to add that to the fee schedule. And then the other clarification received was regarding a cannabis microbusiness, which would be a very small, full potency cannabis business that would grow, sell, and manufacture. Now, we have not had anybody actually apply for that in town, but it is one of the licenses that the state will be issuing. And again, we can have a registration fee, and we are looking to match what we have for other fees for cannabis businesses. In the case of the microbusiness, for whatever reason, I don't know, but you cannot charge an initial registration fee. So year one, we cannot charge a registration fee. Every renewal thereafter, we can charge up to a thousand dollars, and we are recommending to have a one thousand dollar annual renewal fee. So those are the two fees that we are recommending being added to the two thousand twenty-five fee schedule. Obviously, that'll continue forward in any future amendment that we would, or fee schedule that we would have going forward.
You said up to a thousand, is that in state statute, or?
It's limited at a thousand dollars.
It is.
We're recommending to go with that thousand, which would match our other fees for other cannabis businesses.
Okay. Well, I have a feeling I'm gonna hear from bar owners in town that have to pay twenty-five hundred for their license, but yet, for their intoxicating license.
Yeah, this is state.
Substantially lower.
State limit.
So. And the one twenty-five for the low potency, is that?
That's state limit as well.
It is, okay.
Now, I did wanna point out, after January one, we will need to repeal our local THC licensing ordinance, because the state technically has taken them over as, well, as the end of October will have taken them over. But Joe Sathy, that was on the call earlier, has recommended that we keep our licensing in place through the grace period to make sure that the state actually does issue their license, and then we would transition into the registration process. So not too different, but we're just calling it registrations instead of licensing. We still are required to do all the underage checking and product compliance.
Was there any other changes to the fee schedule, or is that gonna be done in January?
We'll look, doing that in, actually, probably, you know, end of December.
Okay.
As we do annually.
I'm wondering, based on what Ron's comments were to us, if we should look at some of those ordinance and have heavier fines that, I mean, if it's making it to court and they're saying, okay, I'll pay it and then never do anything about it, maybe it's too low and it needs to be.
I don't know, Tim can probably address that more than I can, but I don't know that putting it under ordinance would change that.
Well, there's a fine associated with the violation, right?
It is, but a judge can also deviate from that fine.
I understand that.
So oftentimes, you'll see, you'll see a conviction or a continued for dismissal, which means that it's held for a year, and if there's no violations within that year, then that is dismissed and there's no fine associated with that. So the fine is the fine, the prosecutors can ask for, for example, three hundred dollar fine, we're asking for a three hundred dollar fine and the judge makes the ultimate decision, no fine, we're moving on. So just because we alter the price doesn't mean that that's what we're gonna get for each one of these violations.
Right.
If that's the.
And I don't really want it, I just want it taken care of, you know, I want the problem taken care of.
I don't, I don't know that adjusting the fines solves that problem.
Well, and I don't know what the percentage was, but according to Ron, there are some people that just simply pay it and then just don't do it, and they wait for the next ticket and they pay that, maybe because it's a hundred bucks and they don't, it's not, it's too much work on a Saturday to clean up.
Yep.
I'm saying if, if it wasn't a hundred and it was a thousand, maybe we might get it. Few instances where the judge says, well, this is a city ordinance and you haven't done it, or this is your second ticket, so I'm gonna hold you to the thousand, maybe it becomes to the level where they'll.
And we're limited by, by the, by the level of crime of what fine we can assess to that, because a misdemeanor Minnesota is allotted to a certain fine amount, a petty misdemeanor is a certain fine amount. There's only a certain amount that we can go up to.
Okay.
But just keep that in mind, too.
Yeah, if that's the case, I just thought it might add a little teeth to it, 'cause, you know, we can start writing tickets once a month, maybe, or something, just to, and like I said, I don't wanna stick anybody with it, I just wanted to solve the problem.
Yeah, and, and to that point, you could get five tickets for driving without a license and pay one fine. So many times, they are, they, they aggregate the crimes together into one, and that, again, is at a judge's discretion. So we could have somebody that has fifteen violations and ends up paying the same amount as someone that would have one.
Okay.
So, I mean, just so you're aware that it doesn't.
No, I understand.
We wouldn't be necessarily gaining every fine for every one of those offenses, but.
Right, and again, I don't want the money, I just want the problem solved. And if you make it hard enough on them, they're more likely to clean it up, I would guess.
I believe the Charter Commission will be looking at possibly, or at least looking into administrative citations. That would be a charter-related topic.
Okay.
You're on the charter.
I am, yeah. Okay, uh, I guess since the state took over most of the cannabis stuff, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution two-five dash one zero dash zero six dash zero three, adopting an amended official two thousand twenty-five fee schedule.
I'll second.
Okay, I got a motion by Sean, seconded by Maggie. Any comments? Additional comments? Okay, if not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. Josh, are you taking this one?
Uh, yes. So in August, the city council authorized the EDA to move forward with the issuance of EDA lease revenue bonds to help fund the new police station and then lease it back to the city. At its meeting in September, the EDA approved a pre-sale bond amount of ten million, one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The EDA is currently set to have its bond sale tomorrow on October seventh, based off of that, and will then approve that bond sale on October eighth. So as part of this process, the Kennedy and Graven has provided the attached resolution for the city council to consider, which will formally approve that sale of the, the sale of those bonds, that'll happen on Wednesday by the EDA. This is all was part of Section Six, where the EDA is unable to issue debt without formal approval from the city. So the resolution will also approve two of the attached agreements. The first agreement is an agreement to lease the ground that the eat, the place, the police station sits on to the EDA for one dollar a year. The second agreement then would have the EDA lease the police station back to the city and make payments in the amount, basically, of the monthly pay, or the yearly payment until the police station is sold off, at which point we would then transfer it back to the city. So as I said, the resolution and the two lease documents were drafted and reviewed by Kennedy and Graven, our city attorney. So staff recommends approval of Resolution twenty-five, ten, zero, six, zero, four, approving the issuance of the lease revenue bonds, as well as authorizing the execution and delivery of the two lease documents.
Okay, any questions?
Yes. Is the calculation out there, the difference between what we would have paid and what we're going to pay now?
We will not know that.
In a dollar amount?
Yeah, we will, we won't know that until we formally sell and see what rate we end up getting on those EDA bonds at this point, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
I will have that.
Yeah, get up here.
I know better, Rebecca Kurtz from Ellers. Um, I will have those numbers, we'll do the bond sale tomorrow, and then we'll be able to make those calculations, and that can be presented to the EDA on Wednesday. And then I do have on my calendar to be back on the twentieth, I believe, your next meeting. And at that, we will go through and do a formal presentation for you of just how those results finally came in, based on what happens tomorrow.
And by law, who can all be present at the EDA meeting?
We have advertised, so a corps of the council may attend, we have advertised as such.
I'd like to remind Rick, I know where he's going with this, and he's gonna try to hang it on the people that actually went out and tried to stop it, because we did not follow state law.
What people is you, assuming that I'm going to?
I, I just, I know where you're going, I think, I think I know.
All right, well, go ahead and tell us all where I'm going.
I'm just gonna tell you, first of all, that would be, the estimate that they give, that spread would be over a thirty-year period, where we don't know, we'll probably refinance this, I would guess, like we refinanced most of our bonds well before that. So whatever that amount comes out to over thirty years, I'm just telling you, I want you to be prepared for it, 'cause I know exactly where you're going, and you're gonna try to hang it on those people. And I'm just telling you, they were well within their rights to do what they did, and by state law.
So thank you for asking my question. I make a motion to approve Resolution two-five dash one zero dash oh six dash oh four, approving the issuance of lease revenue bonds, Series two thousand twenty-five C, by the New Prague EDA, and authorizing the execution and delivery of lease documents.
I'll second.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, I got a motion by Bruce Wolf, seconded by Maggie Bass. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, what time is the EDA meeting on Wednesday?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
Okay, thank you.
AM.
Yes.
There's no other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. General business, we do not have anything. Miscellaneous, the only thing I have, Ken, I'm gonna give you the floor, you wanna?
Yeah, I just had a little one-minute topic on November third, from five to six PM. I would like to ask if the council believes they would be available to have a joint work session with the planning commission to go over the Unified Development Code, which is a zoning and subdivision ordinance update. So five to six on November third. If that doesn't work, let me know, and we'll find a different date. But that seemed to work for our consultant, and we think we can get through that in that time period.
Okay, that, what is the third?
Monday, the third.
That is the regular council meeting.
Regular.
The council meeting will be at six o'clock.
Just an hour ahead of it.
Oh, so, okay, gotcha. Thank you. Okay. Sounds good.
Is, does that work for the council? I think that was the, the question, if you'd be able to come in an hour early that night.
Yeah. Okay. Sounds good. Rick, anything else you'd like to bring up today?
No.
Bruce?
No, it just occurs to me, when we talk about that lease for the EDA, I'm just reminded the community center, we, we, I don't know if that ever comes up, since we had that issue with the mortgage that was placed on it, but I don't know if we ever reviewed that with the attorney, if that's still a good system that we, we have that. And I don't know if there's any actual documentation of that. Because the city owns the land and the, and the building is not for sure owned by the community center.
I think the city owns the land under the building, and the community center owns the building, and the school owns the land around.
Yeah.
It's owned by the city underneath the community center building.
Well, the building, the building necessarily isn't all owned by, because the city did provide the Mighty Duck money.
Yeah.
But.
I'm not on.
And the EDA actually did the financing of it.
I, I, I think it's very convoluted, kind of like our New Prague library, run by Scott County in La Sure County. I'll do some digging on the community center.
Yeah.
That was, I had Mike sit and explain that to me.
It's just, it's just came to mind because of the, what we're doing here with the EDA again, but. No, that was my.
Okay. Maggie, anything?
No, sir.
Sean?
Uh, no.
Okay. I don't have anything, does anyone else? Any other, Josh or any, Robin, anyone?
I figured we'd just take a few minutes so we can kinda circle up the tables again, because that conversation seems to happen that much better, and hopefully we can.
Okay, if there's.
Found through our budget meeting.
No other discussions, I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Rick. There's no other discussion, all in favor of the adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Passes five zero, thank you, everyone. Take a couple of minutes and we will go into a special meeting.
Did I vote aye for the bonds? I was so upset I did.